Anybody who said.
Got you.
I don't know what it is.
Yeah. Could you hear that?
Awesome.
Got one minute. Where's the gin? I'm still shook like. Can you believe how much it was outside? It was emotional. So.
All right, officially call the town council February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting to order, and we will begin with the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, tonight's town council meeting is going to be divided in two parts. The first part of it, we're having a public hearing at George Cannon's house on five oh eight Rain Street. Then we'll go into approval of minutes Commonwealth project updates, fund transfer rainy day fund, cross connection control, then the last one will be dealing with the community building. And the first part of it, John, I will turn it over to you.
Well, the first part of it is a public meeting on five oh eight North Rain Street. Occupants to vacate the unsafe building, unsafe building to be sealed to prevent further criminal mischief, vandalism, or damage, extermination of vermin, animal infestation, removal of trash debris, fire hazardous materials, or a public health hazard in and about the unsafe premises, and the general condition of the building warrants total removal. Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of five oh eight North Rain Street? Did you get a copy? I know that the letter was delivered on the twenty-fourth, did you get a copy of?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so I'm not sure where we begin with this. The building is obviously in very much disrepair. I can't speak for the entire history of that, but I know that for the past fifteen years, my mom's health has been declining. Thankfully, it's kind of holding its own now. But all of the extra funds were putting, put into taking care of her instead of, you know, working on some of these buildings. And now dad and myself are in a place where we're able to start upkeep on these buildings, and we're hopeful that it's not too late that we can repair them and get them up to date. As far as the property on five oh eight, all of the doors and windows have been secured, so either by deadbolt inside, or we've got hasps and padlocks on the outside for those that don't have interior locks. We have completely removed or almost completely removed hazardous materials. Everything's either been hauled away, or if it has been legal to burn, it's been burnt there. And we've been very careful not to violate the burning laws. As unwanted vermin, we haven't run into just a ton of that, but as far as we know, that's been taken care of.
Probably through the debris removal.
The debris removal, yeah, yeah. And they're still working on getting that hauled away, but they've been very diligent. We've got receipts of where we've taken that, and it's been dumped. So if you need to see any of that, I don't have them with me, but I can get them for you if you need that.
Also calculated, your dad has calculated financial investments you or his father's put into the property.
That we've already made up to this point, if you'd like that.
The first page is just more of an overlook, and the second page is a little more detailed of the same information.
I mean, you all know dad, he's all about the history of the town, and this was one of the first properties that was built in the town, and he would like to preserve it if at all possible.
I do know there's been a lot of activity going on over there. I mean, it's hard enough to notice. I think anybody that goes in and out of town has to pass by and notice that there's a lot of activity that's going on.
Yes.
And there's probably a great deal of people that are pleased about the activity that's going on there. I know that, I believe it was Phil, that it started taking care of most of the brushing everything.
Yes.
But since the condition of the building, as far as the reports that we've gotten after the inspection, don't believe that it's, it's reprehensible based on the information that we've got in the pictures here.
Okay.
So that's the position that the town has. We don't see it being able to be taken to a condition again for it to be inhabitable.
Okay.
And, and safe.
Well, I mean, we, we understand that it's not going to be a repair job. It's basically going to be a total rebuilding. I mean, so it's not like we're trying to slap a Band-Aid on it and say that it's good.
Right.
I mean, we want it done the right way.
I don't know. Have you seen the pictures? But I mean.
I was there with Damon, yes.
I, I don't know how structurally that that could be done from where it's at now.
Okay.
If there's information you can bring us to say otherwise, you know, from an engineering standpoint or something.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sure that the town would be fine to, to see that. Otherwise, the condition of the building now is, is suggested that that it warrants removal.
Okay.
So unless you could get something to us that, that would deem that otherwise.
Okay.
You know, whether you have a contractor or somebody saying that this could be done in a timeline.
Okay.
I think that would be the position that the town has at this point.
Okay.
Okay. Yes.
Chris Tebby, I just recently became involved as counsel for both George and Beth on this house or this situation. And I guess why I'm here tonight is I just recently had, have been able to have contact with Mr. Widded as legal counsel for you.
Okay.
And I guess respectfully, at least considering if we can at least have some breathing room or opportunity for discussions with council members, with Mr. Land, with Mr. Widded, to determine if any resolution can hopefully be reached before we jump right into either litigation or removal. So that's, I guess, our request or.
Um, I would like to make a comment. First of all, Beth, your dad is a great historian, and I just love talking to him. The house was really, really, really bad, but I noticed today when I went by, they were putting new siding on it. I mean, for God's sake, I know that the cost is high for everything. And Mr. Tebby, back to yours, I think that the town would take another look at it. If we could have it inspected, to make sure that it is safe for inhabitants, that's all we're asking for. We're not in the business to tear down people's houses.
Yeah.
They will make an effort to fix them up. My house isn't perfect, but I work real hard at it.
Right, yeah, and I don't, I don't want that to be an unsafe structure.
As a town, how, when do we have to have answers on this?
I don't know.
Well, that letter, the letter said March thirty-first, I think.
Yeah, the letter was March thirty-first.
Okay.
Try to get it inspected between now and then, and that will be a big go-to for us, for me anyway.
Right.
But yeah, if it's Rome wouldn't build today.
Right.
And that's not going to be cleaned up today.
Right.
But you are working towards it, and the only thing that John and I and, and.
Harry, it's okay.
Sometimes, that's fine.
The only thing that we're trying to do is to make sure that the town is cleaned up.
Right.
To the, the neighbors, you know, you've had neighbors that have a lot of complaints. Of course, they're in Florida right now, but I think they're going to be surprised when they come back. That's just my take on it.
Yeah.
So you've got in from now till then to see if you can get it inspected.
Okay.
And I don't think it's outside of you as an investor on wanting to know whether or not it's.
Right.
It's worth being able to bring it back to structural integrity.
We all.
In the condition that it's in, in rebuilding where it's at, or whether or not that putting a whole new structure on there.
Right.
Is an avenue to go.
Right.
So I don't have any issue with coming back on the thirty-first and having a response.
For the inspection.
So that you have an additional person inspect it, maybe get some, have a conversation with a, with an engineer or contractor that can give you advice on what direction to go.
Okay.
That's best.
I think the inspection should be done by an outside entity.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
Somebody get the second opinion on it.
Not just from who's working on it.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I understood that.
Go ahead, Gloria.
My concern is to the person, and we looked at that, and I never seen the house weighed up with termites. We've got kind of a cost estimate, and do you realize you're going to have to spend all, to bring it back the way it should be? You're going to spend over a hundred and seven thousand dollars at least.
Right.
That's another aspect, is it worth more than a hundred thousand? The person you're using to put that back home together is not a licensed or bonded contractor either, and that's another concern. When the house was being looked at, the person that you're having did is putting OSB, hiding things over the top of it, and the floor was spongy. So that, doing that, I would be suspect about, are you really restoring it and getting rid of the termite damage and the joists and the floors? Or are you just hiding over, glossing over it and making it look good, but the internal structure is no good? And going on back that because someday that house will be sold, someday. Would it be right for somebody else to buy that house? And structurally, it's not sound anyway, you pumped all this money into a home that you couldn't do that. And that's my main concern about it, or you, if you've got a money pit going.
Right.
Where you're just going to throw money and money and money, and do, is it worth it to put that much money into it, and it still could be a cost run even more than that?
Right.
And you still don't have a home that's structurally sound?
Right.
It's laudable that you're trying to fix it up, but I think that we want it done the right way for the next person.
Well, absolutely, yeah, I don't, like I said, I don't want to just slap a Band-Aid on it, I want it to be a safe structure.
Yeah.
Is there, is there such a thing as like a, a, a building plan or a contractor report or something that would outline like what you're going to do? Kind of like saying, this is where we're starting, this is everything we're doing, this is the total cost, and this is the ideal timeframe of when it would be done or something, or?
This type of structural repair, it'd be required to have a building permanent inspection's done along the way.
Yes.
So it would have to be authorized in order to.
Yes, through the courthouse in Greensboro.
Right.
You haven't gotten any permits to do any of this yet, have you?
No, not the structural part, no.
I suggest.
So they would be required to pass inspections and to make it sound.
And, and we have up there at the zoning board, we do have an inspector, and I would be, I would be glad to take his word for it if you would let him come and inspect it. I mean, he's not going to be for or against either one of us.
Right, right.
He's fair, I know that.
Are you talking about Kenny?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's fair.
Yeah, he is, because he's been down at the farmhouse, so I know that he's.
And I don't know what all your company, go ahead.
Oh, I just said I, you know, I've dealt with him, I know he's fair.
Well, wait a minute, Glenn, hang on a second. That's my only concern, Beth. Can we save people from themselves? No, not really, we can point out things, and my contention is, is it worth putting that much money into it or more? And I just, we just pass that along, because somewhere along the line, too, you're going to need electrical contractor in there for the wiring part of it. And that's, that's all what John said is true. It's fine. It's fine, Beth.
If they want to make that investment, and they, I mean, have it inspected, take a look at it, see if it's the investment that you want to make.
Okay.
And then we'll come back on, well, I don't believe it would be the thirty-first. The thirty-first is, is whatever information you can get to Gloria, so that we can get you on the, on the docket. And I'm not sure that'd be the April meeting.
Looks like April tenth.
April tenth, so. Everybody's willing to make a motion that we convene on this April tenth with the information.
I make the motion that you can do what we suggested to get through and see you then.
All right, okay, all right, thank you.
On favor, aye. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
And Glenn, if you had something to say about this, you have to come up with that.
The state has a grandfather law for any home that was built before the regulations, the building codes, and when, the things that you're saying about whether it's worth it, whether she'll have more, more money in it than it's worth, that overrides the law, it's grandfathered in.
So you're saying?
I'm saying the things that you were saying, whether she has more money in it than what it's worth, it violates the citizens' rights to fix and repair the buildings that are here before building codes was built. Just like when I got a building permit and they condemned it and they tore it down anyway, even though I had a building permit and I was working on it, and I had it inspected by the county, but I still got it tore down. It's violating citizens' rights, and if people start suing, we're going to lose our town. What about that, sir? What?
What you haven't talked about is structural integrity.
If you want to talk structural integrity, I had it inspected, and that structural integrity was okay. So same here.
Nope. This has got to be.
Same as with that, if it's grandfathered in, you shouldn't be violating the citizens' rights.
Your case is a different story, this has to be.
I'm talking about that. That, if you just said if she has the hundred thousand dollars in it, it's more than what it's worth, you stop them from working on it and go forward.
If she wants to put that money in there, she's fine, it's hers.
As long as it's structurally sound and it passes inspection.
Well, mine was, and you guys went on anyway, and I had a building permit.
Glenn, now, now you're crossing over into a different territory. This has to be specifically about this.
Okay, but.
And Glenn, I.
If you get sued, and this affects us all in the town, if the town gets sued.
And that's why we have counsel to assist us.
Right, but Glenn, we're talking specifically about.
I am too, I am too on that, because that's the same case as mine, it's the same.
This, we're not talking about your property.
Okay, we ain't talking about it either, I'm talking about their property. That's where I am.
No, you're not, because you're straight.
But you told them if they got a permit or whatever, but you're not going to honor that, because you didn't honor it any other times. Your actions, not just what you said.
We didn't say.
Okay, okay, if the town gets sued, though, it affects us all here. And, and I think you all need to keep that in mind, when you order people's places tore down, or you stop somebody in the middle of their construction, because it, it does matter. If someone's putting siding and step on their house, and then you keep cracking down, then they, then they lost all the money that they put into it.
Glenn, this, this is a separate issue you're trying to talk about.
No, I'm talking about that.
No, you're not, you're, because you've already strayed off of.
No, he's trying to make the point, then.
Yes.
We appreciate your counsel.
Appreciate your time. Okay, now.
Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Yes, I will make the motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we move over to the regular business. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes of the January ninth, twenty twenty-three council meeting?
Yes.
I, I make the motion that we accept them as sent out to us.
Second.
On favor, aye. Okay, the next thing is payroll vouchers, adjustment, and monthly bills. If everyone had a chance to read those.
I have.
Are there any corrections?
None.
Is there any, I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion.
Second.
On favor, aye. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a Commonwealth project update.
I gave you guys a report because Rachel's not going to be here tonight. The main thing is that on the table, we have a request to approve releasing the retainer to Thonamen under the circumstances that they are reimbursing us. So as soon as we receive a check from them for the damages in regards to the water plant, then I submit this to USDA, and they would release that money to pay them.
Okay, is there a timeline?
That was that damage.
Well, it was.
Stuff up here on the front of this, correct? The update.
It was for the extra overtime.
Yes, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so they're supposed to send us a check for eighteen thousand, six hundred ninety-five and eighty-four cents, and then we will release the retainage of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-nine cents. And if you guys approve that, I need Harry's signature on the pay apps. There's a couple of places there.
I make the motion that we go ahead and get this disposed of, and it's been a long time coming.
On favor?
Aye.
All right.
Here, it's a combined water and sewer project report, and on the sewer project, we're just a couple of months behind schedule because of the permitting. So I need permission for, for the Indiana Bond Bank to extend our interim financing that we have with them. So if you guys also approve that, I have a place for the town council president to sign.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I make. A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Kind of bring people up to speed a little bit on the sewer project. What we were kind of concerned about is that because of the rising costs and everything, and things are rising very quickly on anything, everything. And are we on our timetable to do that? Because contractors that we would contract out, they can't give us firm quotes for anything, because they don't know what tomorrow's price is going to be. So we're trying to move along on a quickly timeframe to get this done. Okay. Okay, next up on the agenda is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash two, fund transfers.
Sorry. You might need to read it. Yeah, you can if you want. Basically, it's a resolution to balance out the line items on the twenty twenty-two budget. Getting ready to submit it tomorrow, providing everything is approved. We, we sometimes go over in some areas, but not other areas, so I just carry the money from one category to the other, but I have to have permission to do that.
I gave her permission to, I think you know what we were talking about before, to get this squared away and carried over.
Second motion for the transfer.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash three, rainy day fund.
And Harry, this is one that we haven't done in a long time, but I was looking at our finances, and when you have excess in the general fund, you're permitted to transfer fifteen percent of it over to the rainy day fund. And I saw that we haven't done that since two thousand sixteen. So I thought it would be a good idea to transfer the excess from the last couple of years. So I don't know, Joyce, if you want to read that section, but.
The sum of fifty-nine thousand, four hundred sixty-six, twenty-one of the general fund shall be transferred to the rainy day fund, representing fifteen percent of the twenty twenty-one approved budget. The sum of fifty-eight thousand, five sixty-nine, sixty-seven of the general fund shall be transferred to the rainy day fund, representing fifteen percent of the twenty twenty-two approved budget. And for those of you who don't know what a rainy day fund is, you can explain that to them.
Sure, the rainy day fund is a state-approved fund to carry over excess amounts that you don't already have earmarked anywhere else in the budget, and it keeps you from losing that as far as spending power goes. It carries over and it will show up on the state budget, and if something were to happen randomly, we're permitted to use it to spend on about anything. There are some guidelines, definitely has to be something that's general fund qualified, but it just kind of gives us a little bit of a backup plan, or yeah, like a cushion. So we only have, I didn't write it down, but I think we only had sixteen thousand in there, so be nice to have. there. So it'd be nice to have a hundred thousand or so. Yeah.
You never know when one of the police officers is going to need another car. We've had to do that. Or one of the trucks breaks down and has to be replaced. It should be up there where it was before.
Yeah, okay.
Make a motion for the transfer.
Second. Do you have a second?
Yes.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash two for cross connections.
Cross connection?
Ordinance. I think it's ordinance versus the resolution.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry, rainy day fund was the resolution. No, 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 I just, I misread it.
Okay.
What this is, is town ordinance twenty twenty-three dash two to provide a program for protecting the public water system from contamination due to backflow of contaminants through the water service connection to the public water system. Whereas sixty-seven Indiana Code, Article sixteen, Rule one point four, the Indiana Plumbing Code is adopted by the Indiana Fire Prevention and Building Safety Commission, requires protection of the public water supply from contamination due to backflow through connections to fire protection, standby pipes. And whereas the Indiana Department of Environmental Management authorizes the maintenance of a continuing program of cross-connection control, which will systematically and effectively prevent the contamination of all potable water systems, therefore be ordained by the Town Council of Westport, Town of Westport, and the State of Indiana, Section one. A cross-connection shall be defined as any physical connection or arrangement between two otherwise separate systems, one of which contains potable water from the Town of Westport Water System and the other water from a private source, water of unknown or questionable safety, or steam, gases, chemicals, whereby there may be a flow from one system to the other, direction of the flow depending on the pressure differential between the two systems, Section two. And no person, firm, or corporation shall establish or permit to be established, or maintain, or permit to be maintained, any cross-connection. No interconnection shall be established whereby portable potable water from a private auxiliary or emergency water supply other than the regular public water supply. Now, the Town of Westport may enter the supply or distribution system of said municipality unless such private auxiliary or emergency water supply and the method of connection and use of such supply shall have been approved by the Westport Municipal Water Company and by the Indiana Department of Environmental Management in accordance with three twenty-seven Indiana Code eight dash ten, Section three. It shall be the duty of the Westport Municipal Water Company to cause inspections to be made of all properties served by the public water system where cross-connections with the public water system is deemed possible. Frequency of inspection and reinspection based on potential health hazard involved shall be established by the Westport Municipal Water Company, Section four. That upon presenting credentials, the representative of the Westport Municipal Water Company shall have the right to request entry at any reasonable time to examine a property served by connection to the public water system of the Town of Westport for cross-connections. On request, the owner, leasie, or occupant of any property so shall serve, so serves shall furnish to the inspection agency any pertinent information regarding the piping system or systems on such property. Refusal of access or refusal of requested pertinent information shall be deemed evidence of the presence of cross-connections, Section five. That the Westport Municipal Water Company is hereby authorized and directed to disconnect water service to any property or any connection in violation of this ordinance exists, and to take other precautionary measures deemed necessary to eliminate any danger of contamination of the public water system. Water services shall be disconnected only after reasonable notices served on the owner, leasie, or occupants of the property or premises where a violation is found or suspected to exist. Water service to such property shall not be restored until the cross-connections have been eliminated in compliance with the provision of this ordinance. That if it is deemed by the Westport Municipal Water Company that a cross-connection or an emergency endangers public health, safety, or welfare and requires immediate action, and a written finding to that effect is filed with the clerk of the Town of Westport and delivered to consumer premises, services shall be immediately discontinued. The consumer shall have an opportunity for hearing within ten days of such emergency discontinuance, Section seven. And all consumers using toxic or hazardous liquids or hospitals, mortuaries, wastewater treatment plants, laboratories, and/or other hazardous users install and maintain a reduced-pressure principal backflow preventer in the main water line servicing each building on a premise. The backflow preventer must be installed in an easily accessible location, not subject to flooding or freezing, Section eight. The reduced-pressure principal black flow preventer shall not be installed below ground level, Section nine. If this ordinance does not supersede the Indiana Public Code, the IDM Rule thirty-two seventy, IAC, Indiana Code eight dash ten, but is supplemental to the code, Section ten. In addition to IDM Rule thirty-two seventy, IAAX, eight dash ten, dash four, C, the following customer facilities need a backflow preventative device, that if, Section eleven, that if necessary, that if the judgment of the superintendent of water and approved backflow prevention device is necessary for the safety of the public water system, the superintendent of water will give notice to the water consumer to install such an approved device immediately. The water consumer shall, at his own expense, install such an approved device at a location and manner approved by the superintendent of water, and shall have inspections and tests made of such approved devices as required by the superintendent of water in accordance with IDM Rule three twenty-seven, Indiana Code eight dash ten. I think that's it.
Is there any discussion?
Make a motion?
I make the motion that we accept this as IDM tells us to.
Before we have a vote, the business ordinance will go ahead and open that.
Right. That's what I'm saying. We need some discussion.
I am in Burtonland. And I know last week's meeting was in a real hurry and I didn't want to get another meeting that long again this evening. So forgot to have, this is open to public comment. Is there any comment on this?
Yeah.
This has, now this is only about cross connections.
Yeah, yeah. When you say cross connection, does that mean like if somebody has a well hooked up to their house and they got to disconnect the well? Or it's a device that reduces pressure? I'm just a little bit confused about.
So what it's trying to do is it's trying to prevent non-potable water from getting into the.
Yeah, like a well water or something going back in.
So if you've got a fire suppression system, or you're dealing with different chemicals or things like that in a building, it prevents those things from getting back into the system.
I was just trying to understand how they'd get into the water system. I mean, like back, like you said about civilian water source, like a well or something. And.
Well, it has to do with the Westport water system itself.
Okay.
Not, not this.
So if they, if they need a, one of my places was to need that pressure thing. It's, that's, I've heard of something like that before. You hook it on to your, to your water line to stop from getting too much pressure or something. Maybe it's a different device than this cross.
It's a different device. So if one of your buildings was required a fire suppression system, sprinkler system?
Okay, that's what it is. Okay, I see what you're saying. If you have a sprinkler system, okay. Yeah, like a business or something. Okay. Okay, I was just confused about what that pressure surveillance was.
He will explain that to you too, Damon. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? More, here's what a lot of people, where there's some misconception, is we keep going through time, the rules and regulations coming from the state, from the federal government, from the Indiana Department of Environmental Management is more restrictive, tighter and tighter. I think they're even wanting us to check for what? Lead pipes eventually? That's going to come out. We're going to be checking. We'll have to go fill out a sheet. We're going to have to know in town how many lead pipes are in the plumbing in the town. That's another thing that's coming down the road. I'll tell you, give you a heads up on it. There's not supposed to be any lead pipes in the plumbing anymore. So we're going to get a request to, we're going to have to fill out a sheet. We're going to fill that out and send that into IDM. And I don't, a lot of people, yeah, they read Facebook and Twitter and do all this other stuff, but as far as what the rules and regulations are, they really don't get into that and see what's going on. But I'm here to tell you that IDM is getting, IDM is getting more restrictive, more restrictive on water quality, how you do things, and it's not going to end. This is just one thing that we, an ordinance we have to pass. Yes.
Just to clarify something here.
Yes, Damon, you have to come up here.
I just want to clarify something there. What he's talking about, he's talking about residential and buildings, not, the town does not have lead pipes. So I just want that to get out there and somebody misunderstanding that these include IDM is actually going to require us to test homes and businesses for lead pipes, not just our supply lines. I just want to make sure they understood that.
That's good. Thanks.
A good fix with that is if you do have a busted pipe, replace that with the best pipe, not.
Well, you can't get lead pipes.
Good. Don't patch it.
Thanks. And Damon, jump right up there. And the reason why, another reason why we're having people come up to the mic, we've had it pointed out to people that listen in on home, especially some the other, they cannot hear anything that anybody says in the back. The only time they can hear it, because this is on YouTube Live, is coming up here to the mic and speaking. Okay.
Any other comments?
Any more, any more comments, questions? If not, I'll make a motion, or entertain a motion and we close off the public comment section.
I will make the motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next motion we have on the floor, do I have a motion and we adopt this?
Make a motion.
Have a second?
Mr. Chair, this is one that could be passed on one reading.
Okay.
It was the decision to suspend the rules and pass.
Yeah, that's right. I'm going to do it differently. We've never done this before. I make a motion that we suspend the rules and we pass this on adoption on first reading. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Now I got to make another motion. A motion on the floor that we pass this.
Yes.
Make a motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Will we cover it?
You passed it on one reading.
There you go.
It's a no-brainer, actually, isn't it?
All right, and the last thing that we have on the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one, about the ordinance of the Town Council to establish Westport Area Community Building. And here will be the ground rules. If you have something to say for or against, you'll have to come to the microphone. You'll have to state your name. You'll have to say whether you're opposed or for it. And you will have three minutes and that's it to speak.
Do you want to read the ordinance?
Yeah. And also, one more thing before we do that, I will start a timeline. I will say something. When you speak, the town council will quietly listen to you. We're not going to ask questions or anything. We won't let you talk. But I'm going to provide a timeline of how the beginning of the community building and the start and where we are at today and how we got to this point where we're at. Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one, an ordinance of the Town Council to establish Westport Community Area Community Building Board of Directors. Whereas Indiana Code thirty-six dash one dash three, assesses sequential confers upon units of government within the state of Indiana, says powers as necessary or desirable to conduct the affairs of local government. Whereas Code, Indiana Code thirty-six dash five dash two dash one, authorizes the Town of Westport, Indiana, to pass such ordinances, rules, resolutions, and motions as may be necessary for the proper governmental unit to fulfill and satisfy, satisfy the responsibility and duties of seven governmental unit. And whereas the Westport Area Community Building is located on property owned by the town and provides the community with indoor and outdoor spaces for social, educational, and recreational activities. And whereas the town has vested interest in ensuring that the Westport Area Community Building is maintained and operated in a manner that promotes growth, economic development in the Town of Westport. And whereas the Town Council desires to establish the Westport Area Community Building Board of Directors to serve as a community advocate for the Westport Area Community Building and therefore be ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Westport, Indiana, as follows, Section one, purpose. The Board of Directors of the Westport Area Building, parentheses, Community Center Board is a community advocate for the Westport Area Community Building and is responsible for leadership and oversight of all operations, maintenance, programming, and administration of the Westport Area Community Building. The Community Center Board serves as the community's voice to ensure the Westport Area Community Building is an integral part of the Westport community and is an inclusive, active, and valued community center. The Board of Directors of the Westport Area Community Building consists of five members, which shall be appointed by the Town Council. Beginning February the first, twenty twenty-three, the Community Center Board of Directors are initially appointed for the following term of office: two, for a term of one year; three, for a term of two years. Each member's term shall expire on the first Monday of January, the first or second year, respectively, after the year of the member's appointment. When initial term of a member expires, each new board member of director appointment is for a term of four years. The appointee is not limited on the number of terms that the appointee may serve on the Community Center Board, provided the Town Council reappoints the appointee to the Board of Directors. Section three, duties. Community Center Boards shall have the leadership and oversight of both indoor space and outdoor space of the Westport Area Community Building. Section four, indoor and outdoor spaces. The Community Center Board shall review and recommend to the Town Council approval of the annual operating budget and shall review and recommend to the Town Council all capital expenditures. B. The Community Center Board shall tour the Westport Area Community Building at least annually to evaluate maintenance and capital needs. The Community Center Board shall be responsible for communicating maintenance and capital needs to the Town Council. C. The Community Center Board will coordinate with the Town Council regarding programming the indoor and outdoor spaces at the Westport Area Community Building. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by the Town Council. And before we, I open it up for public comment, some people, I guess, in the community is getting around and some people painting a picture that's not quite true and saying this is a power grab by the Town Council. They've also said that the library would be going. No, there was no discussion on that. The library is an integral part of the community and it stays as it is. And the only discussion I'm going to have with the library is this. The Westport Community Building Board could have put internet service in this building. Okay, I had a conversation with owners of the fiber optics. They're going to give us a quote. I'm going to talk to the community or the Westport Library and see if they'll pay part of the expenses. We're going to put Wi-Fi in this whole building. That's something that could be done easily. I just talked to a guy, come out here, boom, yeah, no problem.